As City Manager and Temporary Chair of the Council, I call the organizational meeting of April 16, 2019 to order. I will preside over the meeting until such time as the council elects its Council President. A roll call, please.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Buckholz?
Here.
The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight is the election of the Council President, so I'm going to explain a couple of rules that the council historically follows. You follow the Roberts Rules of Order for nomination. I will take nominations for Council President from the floor and will continue nominations until such times as nominations are closed. At this point, the council can vote by roll call for a candidate, and the candidate with the lowest total, lowest voter total will be eliminated, and this will continue until one candidate has a majority of the council. The council could choose to vote by ballot until one candidate received a majority of the council vote. Does the council have a preference?
Voice.
Voice?
Voice.
All right. If the nomination is selected and the nominations are closed with only one candidate, the motion should be to close nominations and elect the single council member as Council President.
Bless you.
Is there anyone who wants to make a nomination?
The nominations do not require a second, but a second would be in order for closing the nominations. The term of said election would be for one year.
I'll nominate Mike Foster, Vice President.
So, I open the floor for nominations of Council President.
I move we close nominations.
I nominate Diane Fritsch.
Are there any other nominations?
Second.
Seeing as there's only one candidate you want to make that and to elect them. Are there any other nominations?
And to elect Mike Foster as Council Vice President.
Are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations
Call the roll.
and elect Diane Fritsch as Council President.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
So moved.
Aye.
Second.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
You do have to vote on that.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Mr. Fritsch?
Thank you very much. Okay, that moves us to the election of Council Vice President.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Is there anyone who wants to make a nomination?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you very much.
I'll nominate Mike Foster, Vice President.
I move we close nominations.
Second.
Seeing as there's only one candidate you want to make that and to elect them.
And to elect Mike Foster as Council Vice President.
Call the roll. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Moving on to Item 7, correspondence. Council, who would like to share any correspondence you've had?
I had two emails that were concerning the Sandy Beach, and these were folks that, excuse me, didn't like it, didn't like the plan for us to move it. Then I also had five phone calls from actual citizens of the city, and they were all in favor of moving it. And I had three other conversations on the street with citizens of Lake Mills that were for making the changes. Some of those phone calls I had portrayed some, I don't want to call them horror stories. They were, they were stories that could have had a different outcome, and it was around safety and the way the launch is right now, and they were portraying issues that they had with their own, their own children, just looking away for a few seconds, and things that could have gone very bad very quickly. So, those are the conversations I've had this past two weeks.
I've also had a couple of emails from the, from people in the town along Sandy Beach that were against this. I have had one neighbor on Pinnacle that was very much in favor of this, was a boarder, and have had one phone call that was against it.
I had a couple of phone calls. I visited with a resident on Sandy Beach Road to view what, what the view would be like from their property if we go forward with this. And I spoke with Rob Getz and Patricia Cicero, and I received email from Patricia Cicero on behalf of Jefferson County, you know, in her job duties, and then also an email from a citizen.
I also received some emails, in particular two, that, from the town that were against the boat launch.
Anything from the students?
I've talked to a couple of students about it. They seem to be in favor of us moving it for safety reasons.
Otherwise, we'll move on to questions and public comment. Okay. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided at the podium. Okay, if someone wishes to speak, you can go to the podium at this time. Name and address, please.
Hi, Wendy Davies. I'm on 8366 Cedar Lane now, and I, and I will fill this out. I've heard people say that, and I'm going to talk about me personally, that we're, I'm against the plan. I'm not against the plan of relocating or refurbishing the boat launch. I am concerned of the design and location of that, and some of the things I have concerns about is, it appears to me that it shifts the issue for families walking from the relocated boat launch to the gatehouse to pay their fees. Yes, I understand there's a walkway, but then you'll eventually get to the parking lot and have to go up to the gate to pay your fee. It also, in my mind, creates a new safety issue for beachgoers who want to use the volleyball courts, and being, my cottage is right across from the volleyball courts, and on Sundays and Saturdays when there's beachgoers, they frequently play volleyball. Now they'll have to go out to the parking lot to play volleyball. It adds increased traffic to the dead-end road of Sandy Beach Road. I know we, you changed the design on the exit so that the entrance and exit was on the high side or on the east side of the proposed boat launch, but people come down that, I guess you've heard us talk, we have our horror stories too about the boats coming all the way down, they can't back up, we don't really want them to pull into our driveways to turn around, and it's a nightmare. You know, I've seen kids almost get hit, and, you know, same horror stories. It seems to add a large amount of asphalt very close to the lake, when maybe a design could be proposed that doesn't do that. Concerned about the decreased value of some of the city homes that are right behind there, and some of us that are, have township homes, homes down there. And again, we've talked about before, there seems to be no concern regarding the turtle migration. And before I start, what I think could do, could benefit, would be, I want to make sure that you understand, I don't want the problems that this is causing me personally to go to somebody else and cause them personal concern also. I think that there's got to be a design that can move it to the east side that does not, there's no homes behind there that are going to lose their view, okay? So there's got to be a design that would work, because I think that, then we do need to improve safety for all beachgoers, the volleyball teams and the beachgoers that use the volleyball courts on Saturdays and Sundays and other holidays. If you went to the east side, you could maintain that recreational area for the beach, for the volleyball, for the playground, for the swimming lessons, and the picnicking, and there'd be no impact on homes on Sandy Beach Road.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I don't have a pen here.
Oh, you have the scribble with.
There should be a pen, yeah.
We'll let her sign.
Go ahead, yep, I'm sorry.
No, it's not your fault, that's our fault.
My name is Michael Selk. I live at 434 East Lake Street in the city of Lake Mills. I also have a second property here where I also pay taxes, and as a 25-year resident of the city of Lake Mills, I've been a regular user of the Sandy Beach facilities. I played volleyball almost all 25 years I've been here. I have a boat, I've used the launch numerous times, I've also frequented the sandbar on many of occasions, and I think that the Sandy Beach area is, you know, one of the, one of the things that I value in this community as a member, and I've attended some of these meetings, watched online, and I've been very impressed with the amount of time and diligence that, you know, Brandon has been putting in, putting this together, the city's worked on, and I think you have a good plan, and I support it. Furthermore, I also happen to be the Chief of Police of the city of Lake Mills, and as a 25-year member of our police department who has patrolled that area on numerous occasions, and as someone who's launched a boat there numerous times, I've also seen some of these near misses, whether I was in the queue to launch my boat, watching kids walk between my vehicle, to go back and forth between the beaches, or to cut over to get to the restrooms. It does not seem to be currently a safe design. I believe that the design that I've seen offered is, is a much safer plan, and again, as the, as a citizen of Lake Mills and as your police chief, I believe that that needs to get moved, and I support the design that is currently on the table. Thank you. I will also be present throughout the meeting. If there's any way I can help the council with questions about any safety issues, I will be present throughout.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Fierman. I live at 225 Circle Drive in Lake Mills. I've emailed my councilperson before, I wasn't able to make a meeting, but I've been paying attention and watching what's been going on, and I just wanted to say, I read in the paper, people coming up talking about potentially moving it to the east side. I have concerns with that because of all the trees. We have a bunch of oak trees that are there, we also have Indian mound. I don't think moving the launch to the east side is an option, and I just wanted to make sure that you understood, heard that from other people, and know that that doesn't really seem feasible. Thank you.
My name is Vicki Avery. My parents live at 360 Sandy Beach Road. My comments are, I've attended several of these meetings, and these are just kind of what I've summarized after all of our discussions and suggestions and everything. I really feel this process has become a very sad state of affairs. Those of us that own adjacent property in the township to this project have been told several times that we do not matter because we don't live in the city, and I think it's important that our voices are also heard because it impacts us tremendously. I have read the city manager's memo to the city council dated April 11th, and am disappointed in the comments that were made and the underlying theme to us stakeholders that have attended meetings, sent emails, and made phone calls. It was stated in the same memo that two themes resulted from the April 10th Public Information Meeting, best design and absolute timeline. And my question is, is that truly all that you heard in these meetings? I also take offense to the fact that the city has no regard for the short and long-term impact this proposal has on their neighbors in the township. For example, safety, health, property values, views, and an already overcrowded lake. Where is the documentation or backup for saying moving the boat launch to the east end will be more costly? Was there a design, and where are the numbers? What studies were done to determine that there are not Indian burial grounds at the west end? It was stated in previous meetings that it is not known the extent of the burial grounds at the east end. Who did you talk to about the turtle migration, the sandhill crane activity, the fish weed beds in rock piles at the west end? We have asked these questions, and they have been glazed over, ignored, or answered vaguely. I was told there were 16 designs drawn up, and I believe the public saw two of those. It is imperative the proposed Option 2A on this agenda be tabled until there is more information shared with the public, opportunities for a wider range of public input, and more studies done with those results to be shared publicly. In my opinion, it was decided early on that the boat launch relocation would be at the west end of Sandy Beach, no matter who or what. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Hi, I am Rebecca Carr, 368 Sandy Beach Road, Lake Mills. I have to excuse me, I have laryngitis. We've had our family cottage there for 70 years on Sandy Beach Road, and I've watched Sandy Beach go through many changes or proposed changes throughout the years. In 1988, they proposed to move the boat launch to the west end just like now, and it wasn't passed at that time for many reasons. Then another year, we tried to regulate the number of piers and boats on Rock Lake due to the overcrowding of the lake. My question is, is the lake still overcrowded? Putting more parking slots on the lake going to help with this, especially on the weekends? It was proposed that no more than four boats were allowed to be moored, and two piers per repairing site back then, then that changed. But one thing is certain, the boat launch at the present location has been there for over 70-plus years, and that has been a problem at its current location. There has been no reported incidents or injuries over the 70 years. And according to Lake Mills leader, moving the boat launch is the first step in the plan. The quote was, "Moving the boat launch out from the center of the park to the west side would clear way for some of the major renovation concepts." This quote was made by Brandon, the Silver Engineer of Strand Associates. Nothing else on this five-year plan has been approved yet, so does this mean that the boat launch isn't a safety issue? So the current boat launch just needs to be moved because the plan calls for it? That's the questions that I have raised. In order to be able to do any of the rest of the part of this, he said this has to be done first. Why is this? He also points out, "The plan for Sandy Beach removes 5,000 square feet of green space at the west end of Sandy Beach, and only adds 15 additional parking spots." So losing 5,000 square feet of picnicking and volleyball area to put in 15 spots, is that what, all we're doing? Well, I would think the city would take time to make a better plan. There is a whole area where the winter hockey rink is. This could be used for more parking, and then we would not lose the green space on the west end of Sandy Beach for picnics and volleyball. Also, a state and Lake Mills leader, Mr. Herbert commented the fence will be removed along Sandy Beach, increasing the view for the residents, but in the proposed Plan 2A, they're moving the fence along the parking lot, which actually be less of a clear view to the water for the Sandy Beach residents. Also, I wanted to point out, if you go to the parks and forests and public property of the Code of Federal Regulations, online you'll find that it's prohibited for swimming to take place within 100 feet of a boat launching rap, ramp, or courtesy boat dock. This is for a specified reason. This proposed boat launch on the west end of Sandy Beach is only 75 feet away from the next residential private pier. Is this not a safety hazard for the owners of the private pier? There'd be toddlers and children swimming off this pier, not to mention there'll be fishing, kayaking, boating, and canoeing. How will be this safe?
Over your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Jane Hindle-Schemek, and I am at 356 Sandy Beach Road. I did not prepare any comments for this evening, so please just bear with me if you will. The thing that kind of resonates with me throughout this whole process is, first of all, I want to say thank you to the council, because I think that you have truly listened to some of the issues and concerns that we have brought forward to you. What I'd like you to think about as you go forward is that the people that are here tonight, and the people that have grave concerns, far more than what our view is, is the fact that while Brandon has done a great job, your police chief has launched a boat. We live in that, on that road, day in, day out, and we see how that beach is used, and we see, it's not just about us, it is about the entire community and about how that beach is used. I don't disagree that there's a safety issue with having a boat launch between two beaches, but it seems to me that there has just been a jump to a conclusion that it has to be moved to the west end. I think that if you could just put the brakes on and think about this logically, and really think about what we have brought forward as issues, and that we can be part of your committee, we've asked before to be part of a committee that can look at this and come to a sensible conclusion that is right for everyone, and that is what I'd ask from you, is to really think about what is best for the lake, for the community, for the people on Sandy Beach Road. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I'm the president of Woodland Beach Resort. I have a home at 1005 South Ferry Drive. I've been coming to the lake since 1969. Enjoy, enjoy Lake Mills. It's a difficult task when you're looking for change. You really can't win. You can only try to do the best you can, and I think you've done that. I support the plan, the discussion, or the talk, or comment about the east end, I appreciate that, but on the east end, if you're there on a Sunday afternoon or a Saturday afternoon, there are nothing but families under those old oak trees cooking away and having fun and using the beach, and if I were to compare that to the west side as far as utility or usability of the lake and access to families, the east side is full. Don't take it away, it's being used as we want it to be, and again, we appreciate your efforts, and we thank you for what you do.
Thank you for coming.
My name is Frank Gallagher. Again, kind of the same story, different day. Been involved in many of the meetings, been involved in a couple of the council meetings that have occurred, sent a few emails out. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear that there's been any response to those other than the fact that you may or may not have had an open ear to these issues. I want to at least address a few of them as much as I can in three minutes. I have a list of potentially 10 items that would pose the concern to move it to the west end versus zero to the east end, other than the comment that was just made. I go to the beach every weekend. I'm there. The east end is not heavily populated, as was mentioned. Is it populated? Yes. Large storage building there that occupies much of the space. Again, so to relocate to the east end, in the original proposal, and matter of fact, the only proposal that I've seen, and it could be my fault, I've not seen any documentation of what the boat launch would be like on the east end. I see that there is a proposed budget for the boat launch that's $2.7 million on the west end, and when you originally had the cabins going to the east end, that budget was $2.3 million, give or take, which would have included re-sculpting the property, readdressing all of that, including the buildings and foundations and everything else, cutting down all the trees. I don't under-
We have since dropped that. Go on to your next one.
I understand that, but I'm just talking to you about, I've heard issues that it's too expensive to go to the east end, for, you know, there's a lot of things that have been brought up that shouldn't be brought up, because we're not dealing with the issues of traffic pattern.
You're up to two minutes right now.
Thank you. Turtle crossing, there's a lot of issues that we've talked about, we've brought it to the attention of the council. up, because we're not dealing with the issues of traffic pattern.
You're up to two minutes right now.
Thank you. Turtle Crossing, there's a lot of issues that we've talked about. We brought it to the attention of the council. We brought it to the attention of the open meeting that we had, and the fact that, you know, not everybody's going to have the headlights coming into your front living room at four o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, when the fishermen decide to come and start launching their boats and leave their car on the ramp. Yeah, it affects twenty homes, you're right. But the greater good on a restaurant that's falling apart, that I will guarantee you has a larger, greater good for the community to repair that, rebuild it, and reorganize that than to relocate the launch to the west end, only because it's easier, because right now it's kind of an open area at the west end, that throwing a parking lot, throwing a ramp in, it's very simple. I just would like to say that the captain of the Titanic said, "Full steam ahead, let's go." Didn't work out well for them, so.
Just for your information, we are planning to rebuild the restaurant. That is, that is part of the plan. Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Mike Wolf. I live at 356 Sandy Beach Road, and I've been at all your meetings, and I've spoken at as many as I was allowed to. What I'd like to point out right here is when I hear the pros and cons, we're about fifty-fifty percent from the emails. You got a lot of nays, you got a lot of pluses, you know, and I'm just sort, that's just in the last week, okay? I'm a data guy, so, you know, what is really the feedback? Are you hearing 20-80? Are you hearing 40-60? Are you hearing 50-50? And what I would like you to consider is, this whole started with the restaurant change. And the restaurants falling apart, no question about it. The logic tells me, replace the restaurant, it won't be in the way of west or east, and take a year to really study. I understand today Steve Wilkie was out there, Rob was out there, Brandon was out there. That was today, and looking at the east side. So maybe there's potential. And right now, with 50-50, I would think as representatives, what's a year versus 50 or 75, the rest of our lifetimes, with your decision now? Table it. Go with the restaurant. My two minutes are up. Thank you.
You haven't a minute and a half left. Okay, seeing no one else to come to the podium, my computer went to sleep. Here we go. Okay. Moving then on to item nine, city manager's report.
I provided you the check registers for the utility and the general fund. You also should have received these tonight, which is a nice document from Spectrum. I would like to note that we do write a 300-page budget annually. That's very detailed. We do provide monthly budget reports. We do do a dashboard report annually. We did a debt analysis in the last year, and we annually do audits that are submitted to the state and reviewed by the state. So from a financial standpoint, we don't face any issues that would put us in stress from being audited by the state separately. We're already audited by the state every year. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear, because there was some issue with that at one of the public hearings. We had budgeted for new budget software this year. We've been struggling with that a little bit. Some of the other cities aren't as interested in it as we are, and we're hoping we could kind of tie those together. We do have an option that we're going to try to tie together, but Betsy, with her changeover, has been a little bit busy. Dan is still working on the Aurora Memorandum of Understanding. And actually, that ends up being a contract amendment with Lake Mills EMS. They're still moving forward with the K9. The only, we haven't finalized the MOU with the union, and that would have to come forward to the city council before we could finalize that. There was a report by the county on the radio system today. Did you go, Mick? Okay. Todd, I know when. We had our weekly meeting for South Main Street today. As Steve can attest, we run into a lot of issues during those meetings. Anytime you dig under the ground, there's a lot of activity. We did get some good news on Phil. It looks like we're going to get an amendment to the EICP. Parking, it looks like, has been moving okay. We have been receiving some change orders. Several of them are driven by private businesses who will bill.
Pardon me, what's ICP?
EICP.
Yeah.
It's an environmental something. It's basically an erosion control plan. When you, the DNR and West Dot have come to an agreement, and any dirt that comes off of a highway project has to be handled in a very specific way, and Dot is responsible for it until it's fully vegetated again, over the course of a year. So anytime you make a change to where you were going to deliver the dirt and how you were going to handle it, you have to file a plan with the DNR, and they have to approve it, and then Dot has to approve it. So anytime you're, it's not just hauling dirt. There's a lot of red tape. Same with the change orders. There's a lot of red tape in the change orders. There's even more red tape in the historic districts. So we will be holding a meeting tomorrow on Mulberry Street. They have started, but we've been having problems with Verizon and We Energy still being on site and causing delays, so we've asked them to be there tomorrow. We've been discussing the carriage steps at 512 Mulberry, and then the fence at Fargo Mansion. And anything we do there has to be approved by SHIPO, and they have 30 days to review. American Way, we've got the contracts signed. Looking forward to the pre-con. I'm not sure where they'll start on that one. But I'm anticipating that they'll probably start on American Way, south of Wallace Park. The municipal building, we replaced the chillers, so I don't know if you've noticed out there, but they'll be on. We had a couple of days without any cooling when it was hot, and we had a day when there was no heat when it was cold. So it's been fun. They're looking at having Main Street paved by the end of May. And when they do that, then we'll put the, we're planning on putting the weather vane back in out at the dam. I don't know if you remember that, but. We've been working with the DNR on the Cedars stormwater area and the Wetlands Park drainage The Mangum Development, the first apartment building is open. The second one's probably going to open in the next week. Both buildings are full. We have submitted our request to the DNR and our proposal for how to fix the radium at well number four. They have not responded. They had a certain amount of time, and we had a certain amount of time in order to be able, because that is, we've got a drop-dead date where we have to have it fixed, and so we were hoping they would kind of respond relatively quickly. They have not. The water tower painting, that contract is on my desk, and Dan and I and Miss Deanne and Betsy need to sign that. The 2018 street main, or 2019 street maintenance was given to the Public Works Board for comment, and Duane will be finalizing those contracts. Riverwood, which is the Brookstone subdivision, CSM enhancements are in, and developers' approval are in place and being delivered, so we anticipate that that'll be coming, starting pretty soon. We already have several, we already have a builder trying to buy the property from the Riverwood already, so, quite aggressively. I've been sending you copies of the Rock Lake Activity Center invoices. Dog and Shrub is one of the properties that's going to get Phil from the Main Street. That was one of the changes in the erosion control plan. We're still working with the DNR and the Corps of Engineers on the 26 acres for the Kraus offer, the Kraus property.
For the what?
The Horizon Manufacturing, that 26 acres they proposed to buy.
Okay, oh, okay. Oh, yes, okay.
And, other than that, that's all I have.
Got a question. Would you say that Main Street, Mulberry Street seem to be on time or relatively close to what we were hoping?
Main Street is on time, but it's supposed to rain a couple of days this week and maybe a couple of days next week. Mulberry, and when you sit in these meetings, the first thing the contractor does is explain all the delays he's experienced. Mulberry, the delays were all related to Verizon and Wisconsin Energy Gas still being in the way. And so I'm anticipating that, that we'll see some delay requests on those, and I'm anticipating they may be a little bit slower than, than South Main Street. South Main Street seems to be pretty tight. They, even with a couple of rain days, I think they will be in place. They, they are talking pretty tight with the fire department right now about what days they will have paved and how the access will work there. And it's, it's like the, the last week in May, first, that, that time period at the end of May, beginning of June. So it looks pretty good there.
I had heard that on Mulberry Street there's, at Louise Street, it's got kind of a water problem.
Would you be surprised? I mean, that street hasn't been able to hold up for as long as it's been there. I'm sure that there are some water problems. I'm sure that they'll hit some water problems on Main Street somewhere, but so far, so good. They haven't replaced very much of the native material. They've used pretty much all fill. But, you know, those are, that comes and goes.
There's been a lot of pumping, going on, pumping water out of the ground from round water, you know, from-
It's a well point, and they probably have several of them in there if it's bad, and they'll, they'll pump that up into a bag, maybe?
Yeah, I didn't investigate where they were pumping it to, but they've been pumping.
Yeah, either that or they probably run it through a couple of rock check dams. But anyways, it'll be running, they'll be pumping it down the street, and it'll run through a couple erosion control facilities and-
Right. But we did not have water, storm water. That street did not have storm water.
Right.
So it created its own storm water under the road, from what I understand, and now we have to pump that out so that we don't have a collapsing road when we're done. That would not be good, so.
They're pumping it out in order to be able to get down and set stable base under what they're installing, which is water main and sanitary sewer. I imagine that, you know, depending on the soil conditions in that area, it may fill back up with water again, but they will, you know, they'll watch it, and they'll dig down and put the appropriate material in, even if they have to use like a fiber base, which we've used on several streets in that area. But it shouldn't be a problem. I mean, it'll cost more, but they should be able to get the street pretty well solid, to solid up.
I always thought it was interesting how we have grates along Mulberry Street every so long, but there's no water system underneath it where the water goes when it goes in the grate. I always thought that was rather, you know-
Strange.
Yeah, yeah. So, glad it's getting fixed.
So, yeah.
Steve mentioned that Verizon was the cause of certain delays on Mulberry Street. I'd like to note that it's Frontier.
A Frontier.
Just so we call it what it is.
Right, let's get the right company.
Well, it was Verizon.
It was.
Okay.
So I, I did have one thing. I'm glad you brought up the Mangum portion there. That's Brewster, correct, that goes right there? Do we still have the terrible speed limit sign, speed limit tester? I've gone down-
It's currently on Ferry Drive, I think.
Okay, yeah, I've been coming down Tyrenina, and I see cars that just, to me, it seems like they're flying on that road, and I could be totally wrong, but-
South or north?
Coming from the apartments, heading towards the stop sign right in front of the folks that live right there. So it'd just be nice to, if they are speeding, to maybe slow them down to start with before they get used to it.
Right.
I just, I can't tell for sure if they are. They just seem like they're going fast when I'm traveling. They seem like they're going faster than me, and I'm doing 35 on Tyrenina, so.
Maybe we need another speed limit sign in that stretch, too.
It's not very long.
It's not very long.
The, the biggest issue probably is, is the slope. It's a pretty steep grade, so.
It is. They come down that hill and just let it roll. I'm making the assumption. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions for Steve? Seeing none, let's move on to, let's see, acceptance of minutes of the Police and Fire Commission for December 20th, 2018, and the Public Works Board minutes for March 12th, 2019, and they will be placed on file. Item 11, council business. Item A, discussion decision on the Sandy Beach Boat Launch Design Option 2A for recreational boat launch grant application. We do have a motion. Would you read the whole motion?
Motion 19421, authorizing the city manager to submit Sandy Beach Boat Launch Design 2A for recreational boating grant. Be it moved by the city council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section 1, that the city council has reviewed the information regarding the reasons for relocating the Sandy Beach Boat Launch. Section 2, the council has reviewed the conceptual design options of the boat launch presented at the public information meetings and determined that Option 2A is the preferred option. Section 3, that the city manager is authorized to have the engineers proceed with the design consistent with Option 2A as attached. Section 4, that the city manager is authorized to take such actions as necessary to prepare a Sandy Beach Boat Launch Grant Application. Section 5, the city council does hereby approve of motion 19421 and does hereby authorize the council president to sign the motion.
Okay. In order to discuss the motion, we need a motion and a second.
Show move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. It is now open for discussion by the council. Do you have any? Do you have any?
Now, we did have some information that came from Patricia Cicero about the turtles.
Oh, what, okay, I haven't seen this.
Yeah.
What do the turtles need?
The, she talked to the DNR.
Yeah.
And they're not an endangered species. So the DNR may request that we add some sand along the edges of the parking lot. For them to have places to nest.
That may be caused by it.
Right.
And she did make some mention that the possibility of making the left side of the boat launch.
The west side.
West side.
West side, yeah. All planting and not allow any boats up in there, which is a pretty good idea. Trying to see what else is in there after going off some of the questions that came up. And we did get pretty much unanimous consent from the volleyball organization that they like the move to move that thing there, to move the volleyball courts where we're proposing.
And that's only temporary if everything continues. Even if it doesn't, I will move the volleyball courts closer to the beach.
And one thing that keeps popping its ugly head up is the talk about us talking about planning on putting cabins over on the east side. Just everybody knows, you know, that came out in the original idea phase, concept phase. And as soon as we saw it, that was shut down because we don't want to cut trees down if we don't have to. And so that was never an idea that was ever going to go anywhere.
And the maintenance of cabins is high maintenance.
Yeah, we don't want to do it, no. We don't want to deal with that.
No interest in doing that.
And someone brought up, Mr. Wolf brought up the point. I think my, my number is right now about 80/20, 84 and about 20 opposed to it since we started looking at this seriously, you know, since the very first information meeting. And to me, it doesn't matter. So you know, city, town, we all use the same facilities. So you're, you're in push just as good as everybody else's. And any decision that I make up here isn't, isn't personal. I'm, I'm looking out for the constituents and the folks that most of the time tend to be the majority. I don't use my personal thoughts or personal opinions when I make decisions up here.
Steve, I have a question. Shouldn't the Parks Board have taken a look at, at the concept plan and the boat launch as it's now constituted for the Plan 2A? I know that when we did Wallace Park, that the Parks Board was very involved in the planning of Wallace Park. I just was curious as to why the Parks Board hasn't dealt with this.
Well, to a certain extent, they have seen it and Rob has had it before them. I don't know if he's had 2A as a final before them. Because they only meet once a month. But the timeline that we were given, if you remember how this started and I tried to lay it out, we talked about it last spring in the goal setting sessions. And then it got, I just, because it was one of the two top priorities that had come out of those discussions, I put it in the budget. And there was a, I was asked to explain why I did that at an October meeting and I explained that. And then they asked Brandon to come do a presentation in December. And at that point, we were given the go ahead to go ahead and do this. Well, on the timeline that we had, from the time that we got it in December till the time we have to have it prepared and ready to go, there wasn't enough time to do that, especially with the additional public information meetings we had on top of it. So it was a situation of where it was going to be a council discussion. Several of the Parks Board members attended the meetings. And it was basically a timeline thing. We were, we were on a timeline. There's no doubt about that.
At the last couple of meetings, there were three of the five park board members there and Tim actually got up and spoke in favor of it. The 2A hasn't been presented to the committee because their next meeting is tomorrow night. They've been on board and seen the original designs, but haven't had any official action on the 2A.
Before an application is submitted, it looks like June 1st is the deadline. It would probably be good to clean up that and make sure that the Parks Board has, has weighed in and that it's on the agenda. So it's clear that that's what they're going to be talking about. Also, when we were originally talking about this grant application, there was some mention of the Joint Rock Lake Committee and Rock Lake Improvement Association having an opportunity to comment. Has that occurred?
No.
Is it possible to have that happen before the application gets submitted?
Yes. Now Patricia did email the, all the meeting notices out to all the Rock Lake Improvement Association members. So they knew about the meetings. And we did get a comment back from the Rock Lake Improvement Association about invasive species devices. If you remember that. So they have been following along. They do know what's going on. They did express their opinions on a couple of topics and, but they didn't go any further than that. I mean, they, they had as much opportunity to attend the meetings as, as anybody else did.
But it's a little bit different, come to the meeting as opposed to we want your comments, you know, I would, I would prefer that we reached out to them and asked them to officially comment.
I think they did officially comment in that letter. Or maybe it was a little bit broader than that. But they sent us a letter.
Who are we talking about? Are we talking about Rock Lake Improvement or are we talking about Joint Rock Lake?
No, I'm, I'm talking Rock Lake Improvement.
Okay. I, I think that it would still be a good idea to have Joint Rock Lake have it on their agenda. We have three town members on that, that that should probably occur before the application is submitted for the, for a review. I did go down to Sandy Beach, drove all around the Mobile Home Park so I could get a vantage point at the east side. And then drove into the parking area to get as close to the east side as possible. And I do agree, it's hilly and there are a lot of oak trees there. And so on the map, when I suggested that at the last meeting, I was looking at the footprint for 2A versus the footprint for the defunct cabins. They, they looked about the same. But what you see on a, on a map isn't always what you see in reality. And so I would tend to agree that sticking the boat launch where the, the cabins were originally proposed to be probably wouldn't be good for, first of all, there might be Indian burials in there and we're not 100% sure where those are, all 100, you know, every, every single spot. But the hilly part of it would tend to at least suggest that there might be some burials in there. And the, I would hate to see the oak trees taken down. So I'm no longer advocating that it just be flipped to the east side. It might be that there's another spot over there. Another thing I, I did look at informally was, okay, the safety issue is we don't want to have the boat launch in between two swimming areas. It'd be a whole lot cheaper in my mind to move one of the swimming areas and leave the boat launch where it is. And that was countered with, but the restroom is still an issue, but when we're working on the whole beach anyway, we could probably build a restroom more consistent with the, with the swimming area. But as I talked with more people today about the water quality, moving everybody swimming to the west side is not a good idea because that's where we get the E. coli problems more so than on the east side. And so it would be sort of silly to make the swimmers go to an area where we already know we have the goose droppings and, and the problems with the E. coli. So that doesn't look to be too viable. One thing that's been a concern to me is regardless of how it's really happening while we're working on this and all the competing interests, it still sort of looks and feels like the concept that was submitted to us last year in January is really what's driving all of this and that the grant application deadlines is what's putting this to the forefront. I would have preferred, but I don't know that it's possible now, to have the whole plan approved. You know, what are we going to do with the restaurant? What are we going to do with everything that's being discussed? Have that approved and then we build it in phases. And if the first phase turns out to be the boat launch, so be it. I would prefer that we put the brakes on it and do that. And the restaurant, I believe, is probably going to cost more than a half a million dollars, which could trigger advisory referendum. We don't have an election coming up in November, but we would have next April. Would there be that much harm is what I'm thinking is to put the brakes on this, have all the different stakeholders have opportunities to look at the whole plan. And then put the plan out in the context of rebuilding the sandbar precisely, but the plan in general to the voters so that the voters can weigh in. If, if it truly is 80/20, it's not going to stop the project from happening. I have not received any comments, but maybe they aren't commenting to me from anybody that says, yeah, let's do the boat launch where you guys are talking about doing it. So, but that doesn't mean that those comments aren't out there. So I would propose that we table this motion and work on doing a more holistic plan for the park. And so I'm making that as a motion. Don't know if anybody's going to second it, but there it is.
Can, can I make some comments? For Ricky?
Second on the table.
All right.
Can I ask a question? Of the maker?
Sure.
When you say the plan, which one are we looking at? Mead Hunt? What?
Well, Mead Hunt with the 2A, because that's where we're at now. But to.
Well, the whole thing would be.
Yeah, to look at it holistically. The Plan Commission does have to, I mean, the Parks Board does have to approve a master plan for the park. That's in the, in the code. The Plan Commission has to approve the restaurant. That's in the state statutes. So we still have other things to do that if we slow this down, I see that we could apply for the grant and we have two years to spend the money. So I'm not saying absolutely don't apply for it. But if we applied for the grant and then let all these other things shake out, we know we're going to be looking at a referendum down the road for the restaurant anyway. And so there's time to get these things, all, all the ducks in a row and have the public have lots of opportunities to shape the plan, discuss it, and then ultimately vote.
At what point does the referendum occur? How much money?
$500,000 on a building construction. So originally I thought it might entail the boat launch, but that's not correct in looking at the ordinance. It's a building. So it wouldn't, the boat launch does not trigger the referendum, but the restaurant would. And so if we're going to look at it holistically and have a plan that, because we've never approved the concept, but have a plan put forth that's been approved by the Parks Board, that's been weighed in by all the stakeholders as well. And then when we focus our attention on that, I just think we'll get better community involvement because of doing a referendum. And we would already have the information about whether or not we have the grant money.
One thing to think about with that is if you do have a full, whole plan, then you have to worry about the change management process if you want to make any changes to it later on. So it can backfire as well as it can work well to have a whole plan. So that's just a word of warning because changes cost.
Yeah, the more you develop the future phases, the more it's going to cost. And the, and then you have to look at it from the likelihood of how much will it stay the same over that course of the development time, you know, because councils change every two, every two years. And staff changes and state statutes change and we try, you know, when we, we looked at it and we looked at all the environmental issues. So we know every tree has been surveyed. The tobos been done. The lot lines have been surveyed. The beaches have been surveyed. So we know what the depths are across the beaches. We know kind of what the, the conditions in the water are and we did all those types of bench and, and light reconnaissance types of work to make a decision on, yes, we know that this will work and this won't work. And we tried to control the costs as much as possible and look at it from the standpoint of, okay, we know what the city policies are. They're not going to want to cut the trees down if we don't have to. They're not going to want to dig into the environmental slopes if we don't have to. They're not going to want to have significant archaeological impacts or other types of environmental impacts. There would be more asphalt on that proposal than there would be on the other one. So from that standpoint, we did it that way based on city policies. Now, if you guys want to change your policies and look at it from that standpoint, or you want to go develop a full plan, I just, I have a significant fear about him putting a lot of money into a plan that will probably change significantly in the next 10 years. The one thing we can control is the boat launch now. And we're not adding any parking spaces. We're moving parking spaces from one location to another. You know, the the boat launch is actually from the land side is 100 feet out, out at the water. At the ends of them, they're not, but that's, you know, how, how the piers are set in there. So we've we've done a lot of work in making sure that we can hit the one point. And that's the way we've historically done them. Because, you know, next year could be a totally different picture. And to a certain extent, the one thing I will say is, is we ran a tight timeline. There was no expectation of this type of activity this fast. But, you know, as it developed and we've invested, you know, a substantial amount of money into now, we followed all the standard processes that you know we go through every time we review a project of this scale. And we made, I think we've made some, it's not the Titanic full speed ahead. We've done the Colin Powell theory of you don't have to have 100%, but you have enough to make a good decision. And from that standpoint, I feel comfortable with doing the boat launch as a separate. But obviously you guys can do just about any phase you want. You could change the policy to say we're, we're willing to move to the east side and, and take certain conditions. That's, that's up to you. I just, historically, what I look at is what you've asked me to look at.
If this table motion gets a second, that would kill the motion that's on the floor?
One of the motions are going to need to be answered. One of the motions are going to be answered and voted on.
The table would kill the other one.
Correct.
That's what I was asking, because I think one of the things, I think we've established that even if we apply for this, we're not bound to do it. If, if they say, you know, Lake Mills, we're going to give you X amount of money for this project, we could still do what you were talking about of continue working on the big plan and making and doing the Parks Board. We can do that while we wait to find. We can do that while we wait to find out if we're going to possibly get some money. And I, I know one of the things that my constituents want is if there's a way to make it less expensive, tax dollars are very important in this city. And if we can save a chunk of money by getting this grant, I think it's an important thing to consider. If we consider it and then say, yeah, we changed our mind, then we tell our people that and we tell them why we changed our mind. But you can't go the other way. You can't stop, not apply, and then expect them to give us money. So that's all I have to say.
And I had one last thing. I had mentioned to a couple of folks out there that are sitting in the audience. I wanted to do some checking to find out what it would cost for any organization to say, come in and do some ground penetrating radar, things like that to find the Indian mounds. And the cheapest I got was $100,000 just to step on and do half an acre.
Ooh.
So it's not an inexpensive endeavor to try to figure out what's over there inside those potential burial mounds. It's going to cost us quite a bit to figure it out. And if we can find a way that we can get some of that covered or maybe get the UW archaeological associations involved, we might be able to do something. But that's going to take some, some time and some doing in order to do something like that. I mean, we should do it, but it's just not top on the list right now.
That's why it hasn't been done.
That's why it hasn't been done.
The State Historic, I think it's the State Historical Society.
Yeah.
Who supervises any road construction. And then if there's archaeological sites, they have to monitor it and monitor in that.
Yeah.
So I have to ask, Mrs. Fritsch, you're suggesting passing the resolution and, but are you also saying, well, have the Parks Board look at it?
I think Vicky's right that we still have to have the Parks Board and eventually the Plan Commission look at it.
I would, I would like that.
And I would like the Joint Rock Lake Committee and the Rock Lake Improvement Association to be asked for their opinion rather than just told that we're having meetings. But their opinion would have to be on the overall plan, not just the...
The boat launch.
I do agree that some people's views are going to be obliterated by doing this and I feel really badly about that. But we do have to look at all of the competing interests involved. And so I'm not proposing that we stop going ahead with the grant application per se because we want to make sure that it's located in a place that doesn't bother anybody. But on the other hand, we, we need to be cognizant that we are going to be changing the character of their neighborhood considerably. And there might be a way that we can work together to try to mitigate a little bit more of that. What was brought up tonight in public comment about a federal regulation about 100 feet from a boat launch, I, I hope that we can check that out to make sure. And if that is the case, then scoot it over 25 feet while you're doing the grant application if that's feasible to do that because we don't want to be in violation of any federal rules either. But...
Interrupt. We do have a table, I mean, a motion to table on the floor. We don't have a second.
Correct.
Is there a second for the motion to table? Then the motion to table dies for lack of a second. Now, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're back to the original motion.
I would feel more comfortable if we could amend the original motion to include asking for the comments from, from Rock Lake Improvement and Joint Rock Lake Committee and to send the whole plan to the Public Works Board for, for their review and their comments and, oh, sorry, Parks Board, not Public Works.
It would go to Public Works for some stuff, too.
And, yeah.
We have Public Works being done.
To make sure that all these other bodies have weighed in and that these have all, you know, obviously, there are all going to be publicly noticed meetings so that the public can attend and provide input. I, I would, I would prefer that we amend, move Section 5 down, make it a Section 6, and then make a new Section 5 that the City Council requests that all of the aforementioned occur while the grant, while the grant application is being processed.
So Parks Board, Public Works.
Rock Lake. Which Rock Lake group?
Both of them.
Oh, both of them.
We're not going to make, well, I guess you would have a second meeting and you'd have a second Parks Board meeting.
No, no, not before it goes in.
May 15th would be the Parks Board meeting they could make.
Yeah. Parks Board meets tomorrow night.
Joint Rock Lake Committee next meets May 7th, and there'd be time to add that to their agenda. Parks Board meets tomorrow night. There's no time to add it to their agenda in that meeting. So the earliest they could look at it is May 15th.
Yeah, and since the, we aren't even going to be hearing back until, what was it, July, I think, is the earliest that we're going to hear back. That's a lot of time for people to be continuing to talk about this. I just don't want it to be that we pass a motion tonight, everybody goes and does their thing to make it go forward, and then we forget about it. I would like to have it continue to be in front of the public. And, you know, I'm sorry, I can't see how the east side's going to work. I don't know if that's what you also determined when you were there today, but I didn't see it yesterday.
I wasn't there today. Um, but I have been there before, you know, we have, we have discussed. Like I said, I, I looked at the topos. We've had the soil borings. We had the land surveyed. We had every tree surveyed and the condition of the tree written up. I mean, we, we've gone through and done an extensive amount of work for a project of this size. And we, when you look at that and based on what you said, you know, the one statement is absolutely true that there's no way we can know exactly where all the artifacts are. But the ones that have been somewhat identified are on the east side. And so from that standpoint, you know, we went through the process of, of doing our tabletops and, and then doing our field reconnaissance to verify and then putting forward the best proposal we thought was available without, we could design, we could do, you know, full option designs, three, four, five. Each one of those is pretty expensive. And, and the cost starts going up substantially without a substantial amount of gain and the overall amount of knowledge that's there. That's what we've historically done. You know, if you guys want to do something else, that's up to you. But I, from my standpoint and talking to Rob and Dustin and Dwayne and Brandon, we, we have a feeling that, that the, that you're not going to get a gain on the east side.
It looked that way to me yesterday when I looked at it. I was disappointed. I was hoping to see a little bit more flat area than was there, and I was hoping there weren't as many trees. But I'm glad the trees are there and I'm sure the people that picnic there are happy that they're there, too. And when I, I did discuss with Patricia Cicero this afternoon because she had the test results from the water quality, and she confirmed that moving everybody to the east for swimming and leaving the boat launch where it is, that's not going to work in terms of put, we'd be putting more swimmers into areas that we know we're going to have to close the beach because of the E. coli when that happens.
On the west side?
Yeah. Yeah, the west side's the, yeah, the west side is the one that's more vulnerable. It has to do with the action of the waves and probably the wind and everything. And so it would have been nice if it had been the other way around and that the problem beach was the one on the east, that then it would be pretty easy to say, well, then let's flip the beaches and leave the boat launch where it is. But that's not really feasible in, in my mind either. So...
I heard a recommendation. I didn't hear a motion. Excuse me. Did you motion to amend?
I moved to amend it as I recommended.
And that was specifically stated that you wanted to move Section 5 to Section 6 and that you wanted the new Section 5 to request City Council to have, or to have the City Council request review by the Parks Board, the Joint Rock Lake Committee, the Rock Lake Improvement Association, and the Plan Commission?
Yeah.
How about the Public Works Board for its part?
Yeah, because it's more, you said it's more than just the boat launch, right? You want the whole, whole thing.
Well, when we get around to the, all the infrastructure for moving the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park, well, then obviously Public Works is going to have to be involved. But if you're not certain that we're going to get to that phase for a number of years, maybe this Mobile Home Park could be removed from the concept plan because the Parks Board really doesn't have jurisdiction over the Mobile Home Park itself. And so I'm looking more for a master park plan as authored or approved by the Parks Board. And so it wouldn't make a lot of sense to deal with the ins and outs of the design of the Mobile Home Park because for park patrons' purposes, that's kind of irrelevant.
But, but couldn't we send it to the Public Works Board for them to look at the parts of it that concerns the Public Works Board and the Parks Department look at the parts that concern the Parks Department? Can't they be...
We could. I'm just saying that it's, it's likely that we haven't developed the, I don't believe we developed the Mobile Home Park, part of the plan to enough detail for the Public Works Board to weigh in yet.
Well, if you remember, we had discussions about it at, at one of the meetings. And the debate was, is the water going to be paid for by the utility? And the answer was no. It's going to be paid by the city and then dedicated to the utility. So those were the types of conversations I, you know, that you would probably look at, and they've kind of looked at those already.
Okay. So they've already done a little talking about it, Public Works?
Yes.
All right. I just want to make sure we don't drop them along the way.
And Mead Hunt's working with the Parks Board on a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. I'm sure they can kind of incorporate that into their...
And have them take out the cabins.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll do that. Mark, can you do that for me?
Yes.
Thanks.
The, I would be more comfortable with this motion because then, in the event that both of these grants come back zero, then we need to include the cost of this into the referendum, I think. Because I don't think we have enough money to do it just out of the, or do we?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Okay. So we could do it, but that means something else won't get done.
The way I budgeted, it fits within our, our ability to pay. I've made several recommendations on other ways to pay to help control costs and, and those are out there. But, yeah, we could do it within the scope without the grants.
But it would mean that something else couldn't get done because we're going to be doing this.
Yep, there's always a way in balance.
We lose something to pay something else.
Right.
Okay. So that answers that question. So we have, we, that was a motion to amend. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion to amend to move Section 5 to Section 6. And do you want to read what you have for Section 5?
You created a new Section 5 in which the statement, the City Council requests review by the Parks Board, Joint Rock Lake Committee, Rock Lake Improvement Association, and Plan Commission. And then prior to an application for the grant or what timeframe is the intent there?
Some of them we may not be able to give in conjunction.
The only, the only concern I would have, if we got to get on Plan Commission next week, that would be the only way, I think. They have a meeting on Tuesday. Rock Lake meets on May 20th. So May 20th for Rock Lake Improvement, May 15th for Joint, no, excuse me, for the Parks Board, and May 7th for Joint Rock Lake. That's based on what's available online. I, I hope those dates are correct.
Why would it be necessary for them to do it before this gets put in? Are we asking for their permission?
Well, that's what I'm asking regarding that last statement. I don't think that's quite...
We're just asking for input, and if the input can come anytime, can't it?
Probably anytime before we get a response on the decision on the grant, which won't be until late summer.
That's right.
In conjunction with submitting the grant. So not to slow the grant request up, but...
So, Vicky, could you clarify your motion there?
Everything we had and then what about...
The City Council does hereby request that the Parks Board look at the boat launch, but also look at a master park plan for Sandy Beach. That the Plan Commission do the same, but their, their review is somewhat different. And that the Rock Lake Improvement Association and the Joint Rock Lake Committee be asked for their comments to hopefully accompany the grant application because I believe we get points for that in, in putting together the application.
Is that true, Steve? You're right. I did not know about that. Didn't remember that.
So in other words, the Parks Board and the Plan Commission are going to have a longer timeline than the, than the lake interests are going to have in terms of getting back to us.
Okay.
I'm sure that's clear as mud now.
No?
I think I got it pretty good.
Okay.
So we have a motion and an amendment. We need to vote on the amendment.
The motion is to amend, correct. Does everyone understand the amendment?
And Doug seconded it.
That's correct.
He's still standing with the...
So we have a motion and a second to amend.
And that means that you guys still can move forward with what you need to get the grant proposal, and you're just hoping to be able to get information from Rock Lake, the two committees to include in that.
Comment is the term.
Comment, yeah.
Mission used.
Yep, comment. And then the other Plan, Parks, Public Works, just to review the proposed steps going forward. So Plan Commission for the building, Public Works for any of the underground work, things like that, and then Parks for the master park plan.
Correct.
Okay. Is that what you got?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Though, the one concern or the one point of clarification that I would have is, is Vicky specifically stated that she wanted the commentary to accompany the grant application. That confuses me based on the timeframe. Is the Plan Commission going to be able to?
No, no. Just the Rock Lake Committee.
So just those two? So you're separating them into two categories? Now I understand.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it's feasible for the Parks Board to make a master park plan and for the Plan Commission to look at the sand, at the sandbar in that timeframe.
I'm going to ask, call the roll on the amendment.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Now we're to the original motion as amended. Is there any further discussion at this point?
I just think it would be important to kind of mention some opinions from the youth, at least at the high school that I've heard after kind of showing this plan. So from frequent beachgoers and just students, this plan makes a lot of sense to them just to move the boat launch out of the way the beach is, and they don't think it's going to obstruct them in any way. Granted, they don't have the same views as homeowners or people who live on Sandy Beach Road. But the only concerns that I did have when showing this to them was the... Um, but the only concerns that I did have when showing this to them was the volleyball courts. After I explained where they moved, it, they seemed to be fine with the whole, with the whole boat launch plan. So I just thought it would be important to mention at least the youth's point of view, not as detailed as everybody else's, but.
And if I show it, it'll get moved.
And do they understand the volleyball is moving temporarily?
Yeah, temporarily.
And then it would be moved back to the eastern side of the beach where the swimming is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just because a lot of people don't understand that. Well, thank you for checking with them. It's good to get our younger people input. Any other comments on the motion as amended? If not, let's call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0?
Okay. And now we'll see whether we get anything or get offered anything or not. And again, even if we get offered money, it doesn't mean we will take it, depending on what happens with all of these groups that we're working with.
Right.
All right. Okay, let's move on. Okay. Move back to, uh, Item 11B Resolution. Oops, where did it go? 11B 1916 Public Depositories. Uh, let's take a quickie look. Go ahead and read it, please.
Resolution 1916 Designating Official Public Depositories. Be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby designate the following financial institutions as public depositories for the receipt of funds maintained by the City of Lake Mills. Number one, Bank of Lake Mills. Number two, Greenwood State Bank. Number three, Summit Credit Union. Number four, State of Wisconsin Investment Pool. Number five, Ellers Investment Partners. Number six, Ameritrade Institutional. Number seven, Wells Fargo.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
Resolution 19-16.
And a second I have. Okay. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
By the, everything okay with those?
Yes. Yes. We are happy with our business with them. You're, you're okay.
I assume so, since you put it, put it together.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0?
Okay. Two, oops. Let me lost it there. Okay. All right. Resolution, or 11C Resolution 1917 Official Newspaper. Would you read that one, please?
Resolution 1917 Designating Official Newspaper. Whereas Wisconsin State Statutes 85.06 Sub 2 requires cities of the fourth class to designate an official newspaper published in the city for publication of the council proceedings and legal notices. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that Hometown News LLC, doing business as Lake Mills Leader, be and hereby is designated as the official city newspaper for the period of April 17th, 2019 through April 21st, 2020. The price for said publication shall not exceed the legal rate as established for like work in Chapter 985 of Wisconsin Statutes.
I move adoption of Resolution 1917.
Second.
Okay. Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Item 12 Recommendations for Future Agendas. Anybody have anything they want put on a future agenda? Anything that, uh, somebody's got something over there?
Well, we just asked Vicki to do an amendment on, uh, some ordinance words.
Yeah. Uh, removing, um, uh.
Oh, yeah.
The ability to use a certain type of pipe for water. Um, then there's also, we, around this time annually, we go over certain claims that, claims that have been presented. I do have one, uh, that's probably appropriate for council review.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. And of course, members can bring it to staff. Staff can put things on and, okay. Otherwise, um, we're to Item 13 Adjournment. Meeting is adjourned. We will be going into a work session after this, but it will not be televised, but it is open to the public. Anybody have any comments before I adjourn? Seeing none? Meeting adjourned.